Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is this the six or six thirty?
It's locked down on the calendar for six.
Budget committee is six, I think it's six thirty.
Right.
Both of them are locked six o'clock.
Oh, are they?
Yep.
So...
So somebody's got their signals going somewhere.
Would you like to open?
Yeah, I'm making a motion to open this meeting. What do we want to discuss first? Anybody got any particular things? Want to start out with a comment from the public? Do you think they have anything to say?
You're gonna second it?
Yeah.
And you're gonna vote?
Good thing we got Jen here, keep you honest.
Everybody can keep the honest...
Yes.
Okay, so, um, the bids for Prospect Hill. Bill Sumter, right?
Okay, Jen, put together, and I'm not even sure if I can put my hand on it now because I probably hit it on myself. You put together something here for Prospect. We're working on that.
That's good.
Just based on the other, because we've got to get a bid out.
Yes.
Get a bid out. You got a copy of that?
Do you have a copy I could have, Jen? For the cemetery committee?
It's just proposed, so it's fine.
Yeah, thank you.
It's just, it's just based off one of the other cemetery bid forms. I should say bid proposals.
Thank you.
With a few name changes for Prospect. You don't need to run away from the table, it's okay.
Could I make a suggestion that I noted was not on the other ones, that you do ask for their insurance? You know how the ones that are used to municipal bidding included their insurance paperwork anyway? But noted that the people who were not used to that said things like, "We'll give you our insurance papers later." That's always a scary thing to me, so you should be asking on here for their insurance coverage upfront.
We do need to change that.
Yeah.
In fact, we need to describe right out what we want because we want the commercial insurance as well as the auto insurance.
And work means calm if you're gonna have somebody. Yeah.
Well, wait for somebody to figure out how to reset that to the chain one time.
Just turn it back, open it up and turn it back.
Is that what you gotta do?
Uh-oh, now we're gonna be all mixed up.
You gotta lift it off the wall to do it. Yeah, it's different.
Yeah, the shows are in time, it just didn't last long.
That's what you hear, go lock your look up and then you see who comes and makes.
Okay. So I guess we're just gonna make this official that we're just working on this as of tonight. Although we do have to try and get some bids out, get some forms out next week.
Other than that, I think it looks, it looks good.
Deborah, did you get a mail from the committee saying budget committee was at six or six thirty or neither?
I never get anything. I don't know why. I'm kidding, I just show up.
We didn't have an agenda printed for tonight, did we?
No, thanks.
Discuss that, there's some minutes that you guys can review.
I got this from working again, Paul, by the way.
And they're working on the bids?
Yeah, we do have one. We do have a coverage agenda for today. So there's the six bids, right?
Yeah.
You have your phones fixed up?
Did you not do that agenda, Jen?
I got my own one going too. I've got both.
Oh, okay. You looked surprised they had it.
Your own one's fixed.
Because he was surprised. Yes, I have a blank one.
That's minutes, eight minutes for the six?
There's six and the eight. So, so there's the eight, that's above one and get the six.
All right, I just made a write-out that day.
No, I have a copy.
I don't have to worry about it.
Thank you. The eight was long because...
Yeah, somebody just kept making motions and...
Oh, Becky's here, so somebody must have gotten the budget committee agenda.
We'll get our stuff right out of the way then, that'll make it a little bit easier. Something mentioned about... Is that what it was now? Well, we've got a minute or two. Anybody got any comments, questions?
I have a private, private resident concern from myself.
You do?
Yes, I do. It's my own stuff.
Besides your fence?
It is my fence. I really want somebody to come take a look at it because I had three missing from last year. Then I had seven missing in the last snowstorm and now I seem to have another missing. Every single storm, they seem to be taking out another fence post and it's getting kind of expensive for me to consider replacing.
And have you called the road commissioner?
I've called three, four times, left a message and I can't seem to get anybody to call me back. And I was even nice. And just so that you know where I stand with this, I have all the materials because when I purchased that fence, I purchased it from somebody else and I probably can go around my yard another six times. So I have all of the materials, but I need somebody to come and do the dig up or whatever to replace it because I'm not renting a backhoe. Other than that, every time my neighbors have to look at it and ask me why my fence looks like dung, I'll tell them to call the road commissioner.
Well, you're aware of the fact that we still got frost in the grounds, so it's probably not...
I am.
...we can do right now.
I understand that. I just want somebody to come out and take a look at it because every single snowstorm that we get, they're wiping out another fence post or two and...
Ben, have a seat. Yes, yes, Mr. Towns.
Should that go under the insurance of the contract, snowplow contractor?
Perhaps.
Shouldn't be on the town's dime.
I don't care who his diamonds are, it shouldn't be on mine. By now, you would think they know the fence is there.
Well, if it's not reported to the insurance company within a certain amount of time, probably the insurance company will deny it.
Yeah, well, that's why I keep saying, that's why he's saying, "Other than your fence," because I've been reporting it all, ever since last year I've been reporting it, so... It's not up to me to report it to their insurance company.
I heard, you've been heard, Deborah, and I need to make a motion for something else.
That's fine. I just would like it if one of you gentlemen will come out and look at that fence. I'd appreciate it. Yeah, that's all I'm asking at this point, yeah.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of March 6. Mr. Neto. That's a second?
Yep.
How do you vote? Okay. And for the minutes of March 8. Can we get a second on that?
Yep.
And how do you vote? Okay, done.
Now is not the time to move on to budget.
I have to crash everybody. Oh, that's not fair. Look at this. I'm sorry. I apologize.
That's okay. We need to pay the taxes or something.
I'm just kidding.
Who's taking up three places?
It's not me. I think that's Becky.
Gonna have to do a little, little jump rope.
Jump rope. Not doing good with the noodles. Noodles don't go in cup.
It's a great day, isn't it?
You know what it is, is we usually come early to do the paper shuffle so we're ready to start.
That's why I reserve it. The top of my glasses, I get a little... Sorry.
So anyway, the budget, the public discussion session is still open while everybody's getting set up for the budget committee and stuff. Anybody got anything they'd like to comment on, questions to ask?
Yeah, very nice.
Hi, Mrs. Decker, I'd like to go to a funeral. My friend who's 100 years old died.
Uh, you were thinking of for the Boston Post came? Oh, that's too bad.
He became 100 and that was his goal.
I know I'm not making it that far.
Since I have to go back to the diaper, there's a question.
Stone trap.
Get a chair, they're going way fast.
I always have three pages in my office.
Get it again.
Page two again.
Page two again. Again.
Paper's a piggybacking. You would think. I double-checked to make sure. Be more cost-effective, doubles out a great bug. So we have this giant stack of paperwork. I don't know what all that is yet.
It looks like a whole new set of budgets.
Would you know if this is new budget sheet, ready for us or updating?
Because they all need to be hole punched.
I'm looking at it from the...
Well, we did ask for updated ones, so... Page two.
Why do you always miss page two? It's not me, it's the coffee machine.
Wishful thinking. I get too much papers.
You can if you want or keep it. Just general information. Because I believe the last...
Excuse me, Royce? Royce, public questions still open?
Sure.
Actually, I have one. So Dana had asked about the Milton Cemetery trustees overseeing the, with regards to overseeing the Prospect Hill Cemetery stuff and you had said that you didn't have any idea about it. So I did get a copy of that, one of their, excuse me, meeting minutes. Well, the reason why is, I'm asking is that, and this is why Dana was asking, it states in their meeting minutes of, from their last meeting minutes prior to them giving the cemetery over to Lebanon, that they did a complete overview of the history of Prospect Hill Cemetery and the trust funds there. It was created by John Catwick and it said it was going to be given to Lebanon for their use slash information. So I just didn't know if you had ever received that and if you, if you didn't, you should. Right, well, I just want, I think that that was what Dana was getting at when he was talking to you about that because that would explain to you how Milton has been like billing the different trust funds and stuff. Because I would think that Lebanon taking it over, you would want to keep it pretty consistent in how it was done. But that was, that was done in January and it says, "A complete overview by John Catwick with, with the total history of Prospect Hill Cemetery was created for the town of Lebanon's use slash information." So that tells me it's there somewhere. Okay?
Something you can pass on or can get...
I can, I can, absolutely. I'll make sure you get it by the end of the day here. Yeah. 1/24. Yeah, actually, it is March 24. Yeah, but it says, huh?
What is it?
What's that?
It says CIP balance.
Yeah, I got it right here. Oh, good. So good, so I don't have to make another copy for him. Yeah, too many papers.
Right now, I'm just trying to get the...
I'm looking for a specific paper and I'm not finding it.
And there was some more down there.
This is, this is the CIP balances, I guess. Just as expense detail to date, I believe.
This is more paper we started with. That's a separate pile. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go like that.
Twenty-nine thousand. No, just twenty-nine thousand. It is incorrect.
This is only the current year, so it doesn't have the bond balance.
Are you putting papers up here?
Am I? No.
Oh, okay. This is two, two seven, two something, 2017. That's not what we're working with, right? Thank you. Three sixteen seventeen, that's what we need. You better get Jordan before he leaves if you, I don't know if he's even still here.
Well, it's Thursday. He's here for seven.
Oh, lovely, you're sad. Make sure he doesn't have a prior engagement.
Right away, you spent every loose last penny. In other words, you're saying there's nothing running total business, it's just based off of what we set aside.
I don't know what TRI does for tracking.
Great, so this is only giving us one year and...
Well, it says here, audited, audited balance. That would've been...
Would that potentially be what that is?
Yeah, see on the top, audited balance.
That's something different, that's something different then.
Okay.
So this is gonna be your combination, I guess.
Right. You have to, I guess, use both.
Yeah, this is what they've done for this here.
That's much better. I agree. It's pretty loose, but at least we have a number. It's better than, we haven't had any of these numbers all along, so... I mean, at least we've got something to look at, but, but I'd like to know because when we were given this number two weeks ago, it was $9,000, so I'd like to know where they found the money.
That's all separated by, so that's your entire stack of new...
Right, except for the CIP?
Minus the CIP, because that was in a separate stack.
Much manage? I'm not even taping your face right now because it's too precious.
It's just the way he printed it, I mean, it works, it's just...
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. I'm like sitting there going, wait, the flip isn't right. It's OCD thing, that's a little twitch.
It's actually easier, you've got to do work.
Yeah, in the book it would make some, so I just gotta...
How would you like to, um, do me a favor and hold the video up here so that it can't be owned by the budget committee? You rock. Usually Dana's here to do it, I always do. If Dana can, you can hand it over to him. Oh, here comes Dana now. So I'm perfect timing. That's you! Superman.
Can you sit over there so you can give your tape?
Thank you. You rock. Because if I hold it, then the budget committee owns it. You hold this, they don't. Thank you.
Well, there's that page two of the...
Oh, shoot, sorry about that.
What is it with spills today?
Is it filling your book?
Yes.
Well, on a whole. This is why we don't have next things.
There you go.
I like this thing, it comes prepared.
It feels so weird, I had to go in the men's room to get that.
I'm gonna keep these away from you. I'm gonna have to start...
Okay, I don't know what happened to the rest of them.
Budget come prepared. Never know what's gonna happen at these budget meetings. Budget come prepared, never know what's gonna happen at these budget meetings.
Somebody's missing two.
Is she there for Marshall yet?
What?
This budget meeting is held over in the Oval Hall.
I tried again, to put that money, have that money on the balance, I'm sorry. But I think we're gonna be surprised if they keep saying the state's gonna pay for it.
It's 6:30.
They got us on 2018-19, it's work's getting...
We run on eleven in time. No ding 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 ding, you know? You got a bell? No, it'll, it'll, in seven minutes, at seven after, we'll ding.
Ready? Are you ready to start? If you are, I'll close the public discussion.
When they get ready with the books, when they get with the books, because then...
Does anybody want to harass, I mean, ask the selectmen questions? Yeah, why don't we start meetings on time?
That was too far away.
Hey, you, you get what you get for free labor, you know?
That was my whole point, though, if everybody's volunteering, you think you wanna get this shit over with, it gets done.
I got nothing to say.
I'm just coming to ask you, I asked you, I know it hasn't been a week, but I'm just checking in with you, make sure you remember to ask Tommy, when you talk to him about my fence and stuff, and ask him about cleanup day on the 22nd as well. Please don't forget, because I don't want...
I just haven't had a chance to get that.
I know, I know. I just, when you said you hadn't talked to him, and you didn't mention it, you saw that you're gonna better ask him. Also, um...
Now what?
To alert Robert.
Have you sent a date on that yet?
22nd.
Are you done?
Yeah, we're gonna start here at eight o'clock, so I need to, I need somebody to open a time holiday, and then, send a shot here at noon with the body heat and stuff, and then...
So she sent it to me.
Then the guys can go, like they, like they know what they're doing, they do a great job.
We got a whole big stack of paperwork coming your way.
Usually, I said one at the slide, we present all our games, and you don't need for kind of like insurance and over... This whole pile is from this? Oh, joy! Well, you know I'm not pushing first things down, you know, big pile. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Are we, are we doing our, we have papers all set?
I'm just doing this next week.
Okay, let's give it three more minutes, please.
Okay.
Becky said that she wasn't gonna make it until like 30.
Yes, and I know that. Did they have the most... Yeah, this one I can do, but there was no way I was...
We can do them right after the meeting if you don't mind, because I wanna start.
Okay.
Okay. It's easier if this is...
One, sure.
She's gonna have holes in her paper if she keeps on... Let her do it.
Come in.
All right, what's wrong with it? Thank you. It looks like maybe this is upside down. Yeah, this one was just upside down.
That's your stack.
Are you broken now?
Nobody else is gonna use that punch?
Yes, I am.
No, they can use it now.
Ah, there we go. There's another one, please, no more punches. No more punches.
After the meeting, after the meeting, you can punch all you want. That's a pretty sharp.
Okay, I...
I have the same phone now.
I'm opening the meeting at 20 minutes, we stop.
Let's go over the minutes.
Oh, she's fetching his clothes.
Thanks.
Okay, which is so many seconds. Got to look at the minutes from 3:8, please, from the past row. And what we're going to do is have Becky read over the minutes at the end of the evening, pass them, and so we don't have to come back to the past minutes. I think we've been here many, many times.
Does she know that?
She doesn't know.
Go, email it, huh?
Do you want me to read them? No, you're just reading them.
No, I have something on page two.
Okay.
It says, General Government felt that the $92,135 increase in this budget period...
Oh, I wonder what I meant to say?
The assessing agent is necessary, will you explain to me?
Oh, was, was too much. Was too high. On the review of budget worksheet, M&amp;A is not free.
I thought the training was.
No, no, I was saying the same thing.
It's a subscription.
Training is free, you what, you said something about the training is free, but we have to pay mileage and time.
No, the training, the training is a minimal amount, but we have to pay.
I would, uh, the training is...
Training cost is minimal?
No. Really?
Depends what it is.
Yeah, I don't know, it's something... It's paid for through individual, individual budgets, I guess, because it is.
Okay, it's paid. Okay, um, page two.
Just leave, we pay, just...
The training is to run the...
Yeah. 33, we pay mileage.
Okay. Got it. Okay?
Thank you.
Page two, General Government?
Yeah.
That, uh, we felt that $92,135... We did that.
What did you see?
It's supposed to read was too high.
Oh. It's too, okay.
Right here, that's an incomplete sentence, so it should read was too high.
Okay. Somebody want to shut the door, please?
Absolutely, thank you.
Can I get that, um, that, um, increase on the dispatch, about 3.03%? Sorry, we decided.
It wasn't 3%.
I thought it was 2.95%.
It wasn't that much.
I don't know, someone figure it out, it wasn't me.
It was 0.0...
Yeah, it was a 0.03.
It was 0.03.
Not 3.0.
0.03, not percent.
Yeah, 3%. 3%. 0.30.
Okay, if it were be, if it were 3%, it would be 0.3. And this is 0.03. Okay, so it's 0.3%.
Okay, all right.
I have difficulty with decimals.
I knew she would be doing budgets.
No, I doubt it, all the time, because I know that. Under recreation, did I get that right?
Yes, okay, Becky.
Well, wouldn't it be expressed, not expresses?
Wait a minute.
Yes.
Subject of agreement?
Was expressed, concern was expressed.
Right, okay, typo. Yeah. Becky, and really, did you, which one do we take out?
The first.
Oh, that, that Elsie, Elsie. Okay, so that, the, after we had this discussion, I was at the school, and I talked with one of the personnel there, and the Elsie, Elsie is being discontinued as of June. So our $300 donation has been changed, I think.
Is that going to something during...
We just took it out, we just took it out, okay.
It was so was the last minute, I, I got on the phone and...
So, I can't correct that at last, can they grant it?
It will be in this minute, yeah, that you mentioned. So we can take that right out of that budget, which is good, because we put the 500 for the wife plate and the veteran cemetery in there, so it helps us a little bit. I mean, it's still a bazaar, but good community service right there, but...
It's also less than, less last year.
Did they not reply, really, or did they not...
It wasn't appropriate service.
I mean, why did they not reply for the grant, or did they not... I don't know, I don't know, I didn't talk to the powers that be, I just talked to one of the people who work it.
Uh, when, when you put on a transfer station, didn't, you didn't mention that they're going to be reopening on Mondays? As a four days a week, yeah. Oh.
Yeah, okay.
And, oh, it should be at no increase. Right, I'll just write Monday from the SOI number.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Should I change that, that they will reopen Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
I just wanted to be able to remember that it was...
I can do, I can do Monday, Tuesday.
That said, no increase in cost, you said?
Yes.
No increase in the bottom line, yeah.
Isn't that quite a trick? Is there anything, any, are we gonna finish, or no?
Um, actually, Tuesday, Wednesday, Saturday. What did you do, on the highway department budget? That's the total, 687, and then it says 75,000 of the savings. Maybe we could add in the 75,000 of the 93,000 and change savings, just so that it stated what savings you're talking about.
I'm not sure about that amount, whether it's 93,000 or if it's... We haven't seen the CIP yet.
No. Oh, okay, yeah, okay. So we can mention it like tonight, I guess, after we attend?
Okay.
Because it just says on the savings...
Tell them if I put of the decrease.
No. Sorry, but it just says... Well, I was...
I know, I was gonna say, you go ahead.
Okay, so it just says $75,000 of the savings, but it doesn't say what savings. Do you know what I'm saying?
Should I say the decrease in the budget?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. I think that's clear.
Sure. A proposed budget decrease, I think.
Has everybody run it now?
No, we have still one highway budget.
Did we approve the budget?
Not yet. With the exception of CIP, were approved by the budget committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They were all, they were all approved, we voted on by the selectmen. Right.
By the selectmen, but not by the budget.
Right, we haven't voted. Who's CIP? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, you're right.
All budgets, with the exception of CIP, were...
You're absolutely right.
Should I say agreed upon?
Yeah.
No.
No, they were approved by the selectmen.
No, actually, they weren't, they were selected, although we did allow them to be on the ballot. Did I tell you that you're here?
I don't know that we had enough people to vote. Okay, so should change approved to review that night?
Or agreed upon?
Agreed, was it? Agreed upon?
No, we did agree upon.
Well, what would you say?
I'll wait down, we just did a review, okay, let's change it to review.
One more time, please.
By the budget committee.
Put the amount on, on the budget, on the ballot. On the ballot. What?
No, they can't.
The BO has motion seconded and voted to put the amounts on the ballot.
Okay. Or is it...
Yeah, right.
All right. Okay, so that's, okay, so that's definitely, you guys have definitely voted on all items.
Except for CIP.
One at a time, too.
Yeah, one at a time, and you made that same motion over and over. Notice how I copped up, putting that in each item.
I mean, Julie, if you wanna change it, yeah.
Can somebody second?
Okay.
I will.
Okay, I make the motion that we accept the budget with changes.
Minute, the minute.
I mean, the minutes.
A second.
Allevated? opposed? Okay.
I was gonna, I don't know what your plan was, but I motion that we let Chief Meany have it.
I was just gonna say that, yes.
Chief Meany have the presentation for us?
Um, well, last time, what's that? Yeah. That's okay. I'm gonna make this as painful as possible. Last time we met, I mentioned about, well, I mentioned a lot of things that we need, but one of them was a new ambulance. So I got a price in. It's, and a lot of people asked me how much it was gonna be, and I says roughly around $300,000. The price came in at $299,234. Now, understand that that's just not the ambulance, that's also two brand-new Zoles, because our Zoles are 14 years old, so this is two brand-new Zoles. I'm sorry, the Zole is, um, the, the heart monitor, it acts as our, also our AED, it ma, it also measures, um, your pulse, your breathing, your heart rate. Um, it'll also, um, the new one will also measure your CO levels and stuff. Um, so that's, that's that, we got a really good deal on that, because we're also going in with Milton and Acton on that, on the Zoles. And then...
What's the price on those?
What's that?
What's the price on those?
$50,000 for two.
Two.
And then, um, it, it's also for a new striker stretcher that's electric, not manual, because the one that we're using on A1 is manual. And it's got, um, wings on it, too, for our, our larger patients, because sometimes we can't lift up the sides of the ambulance because of the size of the patient. And, and that's $19,000.
Did you say that was automated?
Yeah, it's, um, it's push button, you push button it, and the legs come up, the legs go down. Um, so when you add that to the price of the ambulance, it comes up to $299, $234. Uh, at the time, I didn't know how much money was in my CIP. So they gave me two, one without any money down, and one with $20,000 down. With $20,000 down, uh, and the, um, the, the rates are 3, 3.19%. For a five-year lease, it's $61,322.93.
Could you give me that number again?
61, 322, and 93 cents.
A year?
A year. A year.
Six years?
Five years.
Five years.
Five years. A four-year, for four years, at the same rate, three point one nine percent, uh, with seventy-five thousand, four hundred eighty-seven dollars and forty-four cents.
Seventy-five thousand.
Four hundred eighty-seven dollars and forty-four cents. So you're not just buying, you're not just buying the ambulance, you're also buying two brand-new Zolls, which are the heart monitors. Ours are fourteen years old, and, um, you're also buying a, um, a striker stretcher that is automated.
Is the whole spell C?
Z O L L.
Chief, the four years also with twenty thousand now?
Yes.
So if, if you have, uh, we're looking at the CIP numbers now, and I'm seeing over a hundred thousand.
I know, I just got that today, because I've been asking.
So would you be looking for numbers for, I mean, I know it's like last minute, I, I don't under, I don't know why this is like the last second, but I think you could probably get that payment way down.
Oh, I could.
Using some of that.
I could, but the problem is, is that I just got that today.
Right.
How much money was in the, I knew I had at least twenty thousand in there, um, so that's why I put twenty thousand.
Yeah.
And that's not also counting them buying back, um, A1 as a trade-in.
So that will reduce it?
That will reduce it.
How they.
How much, I have no idea, because, um, they want to make sure that before they do any commitments, that they're gonna get the, be okay to do this, so.
How long will they hold price for?
Um, it says this quote is valid for fourteen days, and is subject to credit review, so. But I can get ahold of them and find out, I mean, they're, they know that this has to go out, that this has to come here, then it has to go out to be, um, voted on, so.
It's still go out to bid on it after that, so we can sort of get a deal on that.
No.
No, this is it.
You don't buy the bid?
No. Um, I ca, I, I had PL, I had Braun, and I had some others, and, um, they all came in around the same price, and, um, even Royce took this one out for a drive, so.
So who is this?
This is an F-550, uh, Ford, four-wheel drive.
I was gonna say, wow!
So, it's all aluminum.
Yep.
I wrote the back.
So the price is based on that discount that you worked with the other fire department?
Yes, yes, yeah. So it should be, it should, how much less, I don't know. I mean, we could put more money down, but right now, I, I was not sure, I didn't want to say I could put down fifty thousand dollars, if I know I didn't have fifty thousand dollars in CIP.
Do you want to put fifty thousand down?
True.
I don't know.
That, that's not our call per se, that would be his conversation.
No, but it does change the numbers.
Right.
Right. So, yeah, how about, what if you came in on four years?
Four years was seventy-five thousand, four hundred eighty-seven dollars and forty-four cents. Seven-five, four-eight, seven, point forty-four.
So Chief, this is based on trading in A1, but you have A2 sitting down there with, from what, your homepage had a major electrical meltdown.
That's right.
So what are we looking for in expenses on?
I have no idea, that's going to Greenwood next week to be checked, hopefully it will fall under, um, warranty, because that has a ten-year warranty on electrical.
Oh, so that's good to know.
But, and I just found that all, also just recently, that there's a ten-year warranty on the electrical on that truck. So.
So we should be okay with A2 then?
Well, it's like, as long as it comes in with a warranty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I would think if it's awarded in a particular way, if for some reason they change their price and it goes sky high, then it voids it. If the people wrote on so, so much money, and it comes in.
We did that.
It voids it.
I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but we did that with the fire, when we did the fire truck, we said up to this amount.
Right, right, so I would recommend that.
Right, yeah.
Chip, did you have something to say?
Yeah. Um, I know there's, there's a hundred thousand plus in the CIP, plus, you're gonna be asked for another fifty in there?
Right.
So I don't see why, because that's supposed, the CIP is supposed to be for major purchases, why you wouldn't look to put a hundred thousand dollars down?
Because also. Go ahead.
Finance it for three years. Okay, you're gonna get a much lower number, and the chances of it passing are gonna be that much higher.
And you trade it in the other end?
Trade-in is just, I, I would just look, the trade-in is just, is just extra, it goes back to the.
Fifty thousand dollars, huh?
No, a hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand.
You got a hundred thousand in the bank, why would you?
You have a hundred and nine thousand, plus you're adding fifty thousand, it's both hopeful.
The reason I didn't do that was because we also need a fire engine. So I wanted, we'd get a used fire engine, if we can find one that will fit in the building, that has at least a thousand gallons of water in it. So, um, if we could have, you know, have a little bit in there, I mean, if you want.
Yeah, I don't blame you.
You know.
It's a good start.
Doesn't this have to be approved on the warrant first? Before you can commit?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that payment of fifty thousand dollars would be after the election.
Right.
The whole thing is that.
Oh, right.
They have the pass.
What's that?
Yeah, basically, if, if it passes, and the fifty thousand passes, we'll have a hundred and fifty thousand in the CIP.
Well, I mean, so, I was talking to sixty.
So I'm just saying is, is that, I, I, again, I don't know how much a, a used fire truck is. But that's, you know.
Okay, did.
We sort of asked for almost two thousand.
Have you voted on this at all?
No.
I think the whole, where it's getting is in the wrong place.
Do we have the warrant?
I would make a proposal.
I would make a motion that we go, uh, do go for the equipment, with the fifty thousand dollars down, uh, up to, and word it up to, I guess, the cost here, although, we are gonna get some money back on the other end, we just don't know. Final thing is, it's gotta go, it's gotta be voted on tonight, we don't have a choice. So if you agree that you think you need the, the equipment, you agree on fifty thousand dollars down, then I think you vote yes. If you don't agree, see if we can come to some meeting of the minds, and then get it as a warrant article.
I did have.
Stick to the fifty?
Yeah.
I say stick to the fifty. Al favor?
Or stick into fifty?
A four-year plan?
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry.
What, what do you wanna say, Laura?
I think we should go with a hundred thousand. I do, too.
Yeah.
How about we compromise and go seventy-five thousand?
Well, if the.
No, I can see why he wants to reserve some money, he needs a new engine, too, why blow it all in one day?
Fifty thousand pass.
Right.
Well, not only that, you know, you, you had mentioned your A2 is going in for service, may be covered on the warranty, may not.
May not be.
So that's another thing to keep.
But that's under vehicle maintenance, not CIP.
I, I had one other question about the whole thing, real quick. With the stretcher, you said it's automated.
Yeah.
If the electronic components on it were to fail, would, is there a manual process to?
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
It was just one of those.
We have a, um, we have a, uh, agreement right now with Striker on PM, and they're yearly now, we didn't before, now they, they get PM yearly, so.
Okay.
Is there a penalty if you pay it off early?
I don't believe so.
Well, how about, in case we don't get the fifty thousand approved, how about we do the fifty or seventy-five this year, the next year we can do more if we have the money in there.
You know, you're right. Like ask for dollar amount next year?
For early payoff of it?
Well, we're asking for a lot of money this year, anyway.
That's what I'm afraid of.
That's, I, I agree with you, this budget keeps going up and up and up and up.
Yeah, that's what I'm afraid of, I'm afraid.
Maybe we should, maybe you're right, Nate, yeah, because they're gonna.
What are your thoughts?
We're over a hundred, we're, we're over.
A hundred thou, I, I'm just saying, I, you know, like she just said, we, everything has gone up. I'm not against it, I'm not, again, that's not what I'm saying.
Right.
I'm just saying that I think we should put the, I know, the hundred thousand, I think we should do the hundred thousand, because everything, every budget, I don't know, maybe a few stayed the same, but all of them went up. I'm not saying it's not needed, because it is needed, but remember.
There are no bills we can't pass, so.
Well, that's my point, so. Right. It's been, what, ten years since there's been a, since a fire truck purchase?
We don't want to lose, we also don't want to lose it completely.
Yeah.
That chance is not worth it.
What's, what's needed, the fire truck is, this year, I mean, you've been two years without the extra ones.
Well, you know, we're down one truck, you know, if we keep on going down one truck, you know, we have, but.
How often, how often do they all go now?
Quite often, we have at least two go out, with the fourth. Yeah.
But that's not the three, so I mean, that.
Yeah, well, the three, because, because I only have, I'm limited drivers on the third one, I mean, on the fourth one, so, um, you know, with the age of them and everything else, you know, I'd really hate to have, uh, lose another truck and then not be able to get one. And you know, you've, you've tried for years to get.
No.
And, you know, we're, we're already at twenty-seven calls this month. You know, we've been averaging forty-some odd calls a month now.
Well, I would, I would, uh, suggest maybe, maybe if we put more money in the CIP, and just so that would be going towards the, you know, put a hundred thousand instead of fifty thousand, that would give us two hundred and fifty thousand almost in there.
Might be that the one we're gonna. I'm sorry, I'm so distracted by that noise.
I'm sorry. It's a call.
Can you repeat, which is you have to take?
I would say, instead of going with the ambulance as per se, you just put in another seventy-five thousand or something into the CIP, plus the fifty, I would put in a hundred and a hundred and twenty-five, and state that, you know, this would be going towards an ambulance purchase, that would get us up to, close to the, what he's needing if we can work a deal more so. The, the equipment may have to wait a little bit, and then you should trade in for something else.
Like, instead of asking for this on a separate warrant, ask for additional one in the CIP? Maybe, probably, that might have a better chance to pass, Chip.
I'm not sure if you put a ton of money in there, that will pass. I, I, I do feel a hundred, but I, I'll tell you why I think the hundred is better, because we've been putting money into this CIP account, and this is gonna prove to the residents that the money that's been going into these CIP accounts is indeed for a major purchase. If you only do fifty, it's like, well, why have we been putting fifty every year if you're just gonna do fifty? I think if you put a bigger number, they're gonna see, hey, we've been putting fifty away a year, that's doing something. I think they're gonna be much, and it's a much lower number, I think they're gonna buy in. I think if you add in more money into the CIP, that gives too much of a fudge factor, who's, who's, they could buy anything with that. That's. Well, I mean, you could state on that. Well, you could state, but it doesn't, there's no, there's nothing that says in the CIP, so that's the. You've got a hundred and fifty-five, if you use that for the ambulance, and, and just raise the hundred or something.
Well.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, even if they go with a hundred thousand, they have fifty thousand being put on the CIP request for this year, that's gonna leave an unextended balance of fifty-five, four, four, two. Is that something that, that you possibly feel comfortable with? Because that's another thing to keep in mind, how does, how does the chief feel about having that?
You mean only having fifty-four thousand?
About fifty-four thousand.
I mean.
We'll just let it ride, make a thing else.
But if you were to put the hundred thousand down on that.
No, I mean.
Oh, I can hear, I can't even hear, I'll be good.
Our biggest, our biggest thing right now is the ambulance, the ambulance goes out almost daily, if not a couple times a day.
That's a mine.
Uh, yeah, and it, and it brings revenue into the town. And we, we need something that's reliable. I mean, just, just think, we could be coming to get you, so.
Can you state your motion one day?
Well, gee, I'll change it now. You go right ahead, you go right ahead.
Well, I'll make a.
Real quick, if they were to go with, if you go with seventy-five thousand, that's gonna leave about eighty thousand in the CIP. So it leaves it kind of where its balance is right now.
I like the seventy-five.
So.
I like that.
I mean, it's.
Would you like to make the motion for your seventy-five?
I think seventy-five, that is a good happy medium.
I'll make a motion, definitely.
You didn't make a motion.
Well, there's a motion table.
You made a motion.
It not, it wasn't.
I didn't hear you make the motion. Well, I crossed, so you didn't make a motion yet.
I will make a motion, make a motion first, that with, with this, I, I'm trying to find words to put it, but basically using seventy-five thousand in the CIP for fire towards the purchase of this ambulance.
Okay, and I withdraw my prior motion, whatever.
And finance the.
Now, second chance motion.
I think it will still need to be a warrant article myself, but.
Okay. Motion, motion seventy-five thousand dollars in the CIP towards.
I'd like to talk a little.
I, 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 see, that's how I feel, too. Okay, can I make you talk about? All right, let's do that. Can I make sure it's that?
And with, with, withdraw it.
Motion to use seventy-five thousand dollars in CMP for a down payment on the ambulance.
That's my thought process for telling you.
Withdraw.
Yeah, I'm gonna withdraw it since the four.
Okay, let's talk about the hundred, then.
Okay, well, if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do this all through the, through the CIP, it's, it's less than three hundred thousand. He gets a hundred this year, he gets a hundred next year, he gets a hundred the year after that. We're paying a whole lot less interest on it.
Hundred.
And it's just done in two years.
How's he get a hundred? He has to get a hundred.
He doesn't get a hundred, he's only got fifty on him.
He's only gonna get fifty.
Okay, well, that, we haven't got over CIP yet. So we have, so.
Oh, you want to increase the CIP perhaps, so you're thinking?
Right. I mean, this is, this is equipment purchases, we're not paying out, we're, we have less time paying three percent interest, three percent isn't that much, but you're still cumulatively on two thousand, two hundred thousand if he puts a hundred down. So we're done with the ambulance in two years. We're not paying on it for four years and accumulating all that interest, it's not like we can do anything, it's just, that's just an expense. So, I mean, we're, to get, to get things done in this town, the only way we're gonna get it done is through CIPs.
Right.
Because, you know, paving, I, ah. I know, I know. All right. Don't, don't this year, don't, so, so. You know, and we need, we need to focus on this CIP, because then people, people have something that they can look at and say, okay, well, this wasn't just fudged around in their budget, this came out of the CIP, CIP. We need to push for capital improvement in this town. We're not gonna get roads done, we're not gonna get an ambulance, we're not gonna get a fire truck, we're not gonna get equipment that we need, unless we do it through the CIP, because otherwise it just gets frittered away. The same money needs to come fully out of the, out of the CIP account, and that's the way we propose it.
So.
So it's a hundred this year, it's a hundred next year, and it's a hundred the year after.
So you wanna ask?
No, I agree with her, I.
Okay, you wanna do the CIP, you want to increase the.
You're right, it's the CIP. Just so I have it wrapped around in my head.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, go ahead, Sean.
I just wanna make sure I'm on the same path as, you want to increase this year's requested CIP budget from fifty to a hundred cash? That would lead two oh five, four forty-two, or whatever, in the fire EMS CIP.
There's a hundred in there now.
There's a hundred thousand in there.
It's two hundred.
Right, but he's gonna use half of it for the ambulance, not paying this. He's gonna use half of it for the ambulance, at the end of next year, he'll use the other half, he'll use that hundred.
Okay, and I see, and I see what you're saying, because.
So no, no, we saw it, it would just be a thing.
Well, okay.
I have a very, I have a very key issue to that, I'm like, not that I disagree with that.
Excuse, wait, wait, I'll call you, hang on one second, are you done, Sean?
I just wanted to make sure I was following.
Oh, okay, all right, I think you were, no, go ahead.
Not that I disagree with it, but if the CIP has turned down, voted down, you have no ambulance.
That's my, that's my. That's my, that's my.
So the town, if the town votes once for the entire ambulance, how you pay it is, you can change the payment, you can pay it off early, but you have to get the town to buy into the ambulance because if they vote, cuz he can't do anything, even if he has a hundred thousand. He can't make a contract for an ambulance.
Right.
Without knowing if the other three hundred's gonna, the other two hundred's gonna come in. Which is, which is doing it out of CIP, you can't do that. So that's the.
That's my issue because we've got so many other increases, I'm afraid.
Deborah?
So, maybe it's just me, but I'd like a little clarification on something because I didn't hear chief say purchase, I heard chief say lease.
Lease. Lease purchase.
It's a lease purchase, yeah.
So, what we would do is five-year lease and then like finish off the purchase at the end of it?
No.
Is that how that works? I don't know how it works, so.
Purchase lease, lease the purchase, but the five-year is kind of hard, we're trying to avoid going through this for five years.
Right, well, I understand that, but I just, I kept hearing lease from over here, I kept hearing purchase from over here, I just wanted to know where the. Yeah, I just wanted to know how that works.
Okay, anybody else have any suggestions? Yes, Rebecca?
I just think that there's a lot of people that are gonna freak out when they see a hundred thousand dollars going into CIP. I mean, people are struggling to keep their homes, and.
What's gonna raise the?
But they're not going to see that we're saving money in the long run unless we make a really strong case and they come to the public hearing. When they see that amount on the ballot, they're going to freak out.
Well, they'll have a new ambulance if they come to the.
You know, if, if I'm correct, um, well, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you put a hundred thousand down on this ambulance, it still has to be voted on by the people for the lease.
Yeah, right.
And then the CIP wouldn't change, you wouldn't use that for a payment, you would have that in there for another, wouldn't you use that for the new truck if we needed one?
So you can use it either way.
Either way.
Either way.
Like, but what, can I answer? What I think, and then you guys can correct me if I'm wrong. So what you would do is you, the budget committee would increase the CIP so that the people are gonna vote on that CIP to have extra money in the CIP. And then on a separate warrant article, it has to say that they want to purchase the ambulance using a hundred thousand out of the CIP. It clearly spells out in the article, a hundred thousand would come out of the CIP. And then you'd have, you have to put the payments in there because after that whole five-year, six-year.
Yeah.
Debacle on the last ambulance, I think people wanna know how much the payments are, so we'd have to have those numbers. I personally think, I wouldn't, and not because I have no confidence in what's going on, but I wouldn't vote for anything if I didn't see the payment and know what the payment was after that last mess.
Well, I don't, I don't think if, I, I don't think if we add this to his budget, that it's going to pass.
No, absolutely.
It needs, it needs to stay out of his.
It needs to stay out of his budget, it needs to be some, some.
Okay, I agree. I think at this point, we have two options here. Seventy-five percent down, I think the fifty's kinda gone.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Can we put on the warrant to, to purchase the thing, but say that eventually it's gonna come out of the CIP every year? And that would, that gave us a guarantee as far as purchasing it, is it legal to go commit to town to two or three years?
I don't know, if the CIP doesn't pass.
You can say it comes out of CIP, but you gotta still fund CIP.
Right, I mean.
And if you don't, and if you don't fund, if you don't fund it, if you don't fund CIP, if that pays.
The next thing is the lease, you have to.
Okay, I think, I think we chew this so long. I'd just like to know, would selectmen like to say anything or guide us in any way as to what maybe will pass when it gets to them?
I'm voting no.
You're voting no on the whole, anytime on the whole thing?
Shouldn't.
Okay, so that's gonna be sale made, cuz you're, you have a yes, right?
That's my.
So you're no on the ambulance in your yes, so.
Well, I have a little something to say too.
Oh, oh, would you like to talk now?
This, uh.
Yeah. Go ahead.
This ambulance is not just a five-year ambulance, you're talking about something that's gonna be good, probably twenty, hopefully. I don't think so. Lot better.
No, no.
Then, then I'll say ten, and probably will all agree on that one.
It gets in the room.
All right, let's talk, let, wait up, one person at a time, please.
So my vote will be, be yes, it's definitely something we need. We've got, we've got two of them there right now that are time bombs, as far as I'm concerned, they're gonna, they're gonna keep coming by, and the prices are gonna keep getting higher.
Okay, in cases where you two will split, how, will it go on the ballot anyway? It will go on the ballot anyway?
Yeah.
It's still.
And it will go.
Just be that same.
Why would it go on the ballot?
Because we're, I guess, because he asked for it. The chief asked for it.
Yeah, he has to go on the ballot.
Okay, so Paul's right, because they're voting whether it's going on the ballot or not. Okay, so with two of them out there, which I've experienced, you're gonna either bash heads and tell you guys one of your compromises, or their recommendation is it's not going on the ballot. However, with your new budget committee ordinance, you guys can then say, you, you need to spend some time trying to convince one of them. I mean, if you, you want it on the ballot as a budget committee, and you need to try to convince him if he's stuck, then you're gonna have to say, we've done our due diligence and you can put the question on the ballot.
Paul, do you mean that you don't want it on the ballot, or you're not gonna vote for it?
I'm not gonna vote for it.
So you don't, you do want it on the ballot, or you think it should be on the ballot, so people can choose?
Well, if you're gonna do that, then I'll say, don't put any numbers from anyone.
Can you do that?
Yeah, do that.
It's money, you have to put a recommendation.
No, 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 I don't mean money, I mean budget committee five or four or whatever.
You have to.
No, we have to do that, we have to.
No, have to do that.
We have to do that.
I would say selectmen, one yes and one no.
Right.
I don't want anybody to know either.
If we put, if you agree to put it on the ballot and let the people decide. And let the people decide.
That's right.
Would that be possible to get you to say? Okay?
Thank you.
Let them make a motion and put, put on the.
Yes, Royce, you have to make the motion.
I think they're all, that the, that the ambulance be put on the ballot at the price discussed earlier by the budget committee. No.
No, you're, you're gonna, you're gonna allow.
This is to put it on the ballot.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor.
All in favor. You don't, you don't care.
Good job.
We'll see about the numbers, but.
All right, so now we're gonna, we're back to the numbers, all right? Okay, is the fifty on, is the fifty gone, the fifty thousand dollars down is a dead issue? Yeah, correct, yeah. I'm having an issue, everyone's saying. I agree.
Everybody agrees. We have.
Well, you could take a seventy-five or a hundred. Seventy-five or a hundred is seems to be what we're looking at, and we're also looking at increasing the CIP, that would be a yes or no also. So I think we'll look at first, how much down? You can convince each other for a few moments, I have, I have one second. Yes. What do you think, Chip?
Well, I think if you just put it on the ballot as you're gonna buy one and pay for it in three years, have the town vote on that, this is what it's gonna cost, two hundred and ninety-nine or whatever, and say we're gonna pay for it in three years, we're gonna pay for it out of the CIP.
But you don't, you don't think that we should, oh, I say I'm gonna pay out again.
So we'll pay a hundred.
But what are you, where are you looking to put down? What do you think that they should do?
Well, they put a hundred thousand dollars, I mean, if they're gonna pay for it in three years out of CIP. And it's not.
I think it's a better.
As long as they, as long the town pulls to do that.
Exactly.
But, but what if we, we don't pass the CIP?
Well, you're not gonna pass.
We don't have the money to pay for the ambulance.
They don't pass the CIP, they're.
Then the ambulance fails.
Right, but if we add a twiz budget, it's gonna fail anyway.
Right.
You know that's dead water.
They're either gonna go for, they gotta go for it one way.
Sean, you're in charge.
Yeah, I'm gonna motion then, your first.
Okay, so if you actually commit to a lease contract with an entity and you start purchasing this thing, and the CIP fails next year, year after, and you don't have enough to make the payment, it can be right back where we just were with the special ambulance question, and you'd be paying, potentially paying fees to return.
But it gets worded to put a hundred thousand dollars into the CIP for the purchase of the ambulance for the next two years. It's done being voted on. They're, they're committing this year.
If they pass it.
Right, right, right. So, so.
As long as you're worried for multiple years, we're good.
Yeah, it would be one vote, and it would be a hundred thousand per year.
Just a comment, this prior EMS brought in a hundred and twenty-six thousand and change last year into the general fund. So it brings in over a hundred thousand.
We know that, but nobody else is gonna know that.
Well, but we need to make that known.
We will, but if all forty people start. That's the broad one. The problem is disseminating the information.
And broadcasting, like videos.
Yes, right, we're working on that.
Yeah, but, um, whatever.
So, I, I agree that I think we ought to put the hundred thousand, I also.
You can correct, it's not just what he takes in, this money can't.
Right, but he can't do anything about the money he can't collect.
Well.
So he, so what he brings in.
Say he takes in a hundred thousand.
But he does, he brings in, that, that's physical, that actually, that helps the whole commitment.
Yes. There's so much money he can't collect. So the people should know how much he can't collect, that's what I get there.
Yeah, so do we, do we have any idea what, how much that is?
At the end, I finish.
Revenue from our revenue sheets.
Sorry, I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm not gonna get anywhere though.
Come to a cylinder and we wipe out whatever he can't collect.
Right. But that's how much came in.
We'll, we'll come, we'll come back to the, the revenue.
So, it's interesting that you were talking about revenue, because that's what I was trying to ask, is could we commit, like has been discussed before, even though we don't wanna go into a, a situation like we had with rescue before, but could we commit a portion of that revenue yearly into the CIP, which we have discussed already? Commit a portion of that revenue into the CIP so that fifty percent of the revenue goes into the CIP, and this town still funds fifty thousand into the CIP, because then you'd be looking at your money.
Excuse me, Chip.
Roger.
I'll be back.
I think Chip had a comment on that.
Well, I, I don't, I don't think you can, because the, the ambulance was an enterprise account, which is where it stays. Once it goes into general government, what authorizes them to put it someplace else?
Well, the people would authorize them to put it somewhere else.
Again, I just, I don't know the legal entity, and that, that might better have an idea. I, I'd ask, you know, the old treasurer might have a better idea, but not, I, I don't, I don't think. And I think that's confusing, I mean, my.
I don't think you can.
My, my thing is, is that they need an ambulance now, it's also a revenue maker, but they also are gonna need a fire truck down the road. One can argue whether they need it now, or whether they're gonna need it next year, whether they're gonna need it the year after, but they're gonna need one here fairly soon. And so if we're using up the CIP for the next three years, what's the chances that we're gonna get a five hundred thousand dollar purchase passed in this town? Zip to nil to nothing.
Right.
Ain't gonna happen. So financing while we're paying interest, it's not a lot of interest. The, the interest amount isn't, I mean, leverage is nothing wrong with that, I mean, you, you mortgage a house, why? Because you can't pay for the whole thing. I think by using a hundred thousand, allowing the CIP to build back up again for another couple of years, now when they wanna do a fire truck, they have a big chunk to put down towards the fire truck. And I think that's what people feel that the CIP is designed for, so let them see in, in work now, putting a hundred thousand chunk down that they don't have to pay for, finance the rest, three-year, four-year, I wouldn't go five-year, but try to do it as short a period of time as you can. With that's, that's not too onerous in the amount, and that's debatable. I wouldn't do it shorter than three, maybe three to four, and then, and then you should be fine. That's, at least that I think makes, because the bottom line, I think that's gonna pass, has a better chance of passing than if you're increasing the CIPs by a hundred thousand and doing that. I just think that gets too confusing, and you run too many risks of, of those things failing.
I'll shut up.
Does everyone talk?
No, I.
Becky's still there. Okay, so the payment for four years was seventy-five thousand four hundred eighty-six with twenty thousand down. If we put a hundred thousand down, they could change those numbers a little bit so that it might come in at three years, and I bet the payment would be even lower.
We're all sitting there on that train. Which now is gonna be negligible.
I'm just disappointed that we don't have better numbers in front of us.
Before we could. You know what I'm saying?
Sean, do you, can you figure that?
That, no.
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 That's, that's gonna get a little tricky because.
A solution for you, because it is whatever the number is.
Yeah.
So you can vote, I'd vote on a, on a term, a three-year or a four-year term. He can find out the number tomorrow morning and plug it in, whatever that, whatever that number is. So you can still vote on whatever that number is, because it's the four-year number. With, with X amount down, you can say what, how much you want down, but the number is the number, it's not.
I just wanna, real quick, just touch on this. When we put to ballot the CIP question, it reads as what? Shall the town revenue raise and appropriate the sum of?
Fifty thousand dollars.
Well, well, it's not, is it broken down?
It's broken down, yeah, it's broken down, yes.
For fire.
I, I know, I'm just, I'm trying to think of how this is gonna show up on the ballot and what questions it's gonna be.
If we change the CMP, it will read the same way, the number will lay, it'll only be.
Well, I wanted this. Well, that's fantastic.
It specifies each one, I do believe.
Okay, that's, that was my first question.
Yeah.
So my second question, with, with the purchase of an ambulance.
Yes.
I know, Jerry, you had mentioned it being a part of fire EMS's budget, but it wouldn't be part of their bottom line, it would be an additional question that we're showing.
If, if you're voting just for an ambulance, if it's going, I think if it's coming from the CIP, it'll, it will do it, but if, but if, if you're voting for an ambulance to come out of his budget, it's gonna be.
So.
There were so many, there were so many fractions last year.
No, it's not out of his budget, it's a separate, it's a separate.
If it's, if it's going with the CIP, if, if the ballot question has to do with the CIP, increasing the CIP to pay for it, then I, I don't, I don't think they will have as much of a problem with it.
Well, so, so here's the thing, if, if they put a hundred thousand for the CIP in line for fire this year, that's gonna put two hundred thousand into the CIP.
Right.
So at that point, what happens, I guess, would be the next question, does me, him go and get the information? Do we use that two hundred thousand that's in the CIP to purchase this thing, or does that still need to vote?
That, that's up to the selectmen.
That's up to the.
Right.
Okay, cuz that's, the selectmen will make the decision.
Right. They write.
Are we ready? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, does the payment on the ambulance, does that need to be approved each year by the voters?
No. No.
It would not.
It should be written.
It should be written.
It's a one-time show.
Do it once.
Right. Okay, and we.
But instead of the two ninety-nine, if you drop the fifty thousand and nineteen thousand, take that out of CIP, it's two, two hundred and thirty-nine for the ambulance, and get a price on leasing, that would be cheaper than.
Oh, yeah.
All right, well, we have two issues here then.
Okay.
Cause you got fifty thousand and nineteen thousand for equipment.
How much, all right, let's put it this way. How many people wants seventy-five thousand dollars to be put down from the CIP?
Seventy-five?
Yeah.
Yeah, fine.
Does one?
Cause it needs some twenty-three thousand, cause it needs something.
Let me just, there's three. And how many people want a hundred thousand dollars to be put down?
I'm gonna have to say.
Go ahead.
No, with the hundred, yeah, cuz I mean, at that point, if we're putting a hundred thousand that's there now, and we still do the CIP, raise it from fifty to a hundred on this year's ballot, that's gonna lead.
I'll change my mind.
That's a separation, I want, I want, I want.
Yeah, that's.
Hey, wait a minute. Hang on, thank you so much.
I'll change my vote.
I'm sorry.
A hundred thousand.
I just gotta, I gotta hear one person at a time, and everyone can talk, believe me, go ahead, Deborah, I believe.
I will change my vote to a hundred, from seventy-five to a hundred, because I keep forgetting that we're gonna hopefully have another fifty placed.
Now, I wanna know, who wants to raise the CIP? Who wants to raise the CIP from fifty thousand, it's fifty thousand.
Correct.
How many people wanna raise the CIP for the fire department, or the.
Fire.
Whatever, fire and ambulance, well, CIP, that's not what I was.
I, I think we should raise it, but maybe not a hundred thousand. If you look at the amount, the, the road paving and highway get, maybe if you just raise it to seventy-five, it's a hundred thousand.
Let's, let's put it this way.
Who wants to raise, raise the CIP, raise, increase the CIP? Okay, one, two, three, four, everybody pretty much.
Everybody but you.
That's fine, that's fine, everybody has an opinion.
Yeah, Chip.
I voted yes, I want to raise it. Now, now we come to the amount. Jerry, what do you think?
Well, if, okay, if we're gonna go with a hundred thousand, and it's three hundred thousand, so that leaves two hundred thousand, so if we do that by three years, how do I, I can't, so that's six hundred, that's sixty-six, basically sixty-seven thousand per year. So we raise it by seventy-five, we ask for seventy-five and we pay it, you know, three payments.
Go from a fifty to seventy-five?
Right. And then, and then pays six hundred and seventy thousand, or seventy thousand of.
To increase, increase to seventy-five, yeah, I could look at that too.[1680.82] Corinna?
I'm sorry, Corinna?
I, I don't think that, though, if, if the CIP doesn't pass, we won't have the money to pay our payment for the ambulance. So, it's kinda separate. You're gonna take the hundred thousand out this year for the down payment, and then make payments.
We, we can't, we can't do any of it unless, unless the CIP passes, because there's no way we're gonna get that on his budget.
There's already a hundred thousand in there.
I know, but that's not, that's not enough to pay for a three hundred thousand dollar vehicle, so.
But you're also agreeing to a lease payment.
But he can't.
That's not tied to your CIP, in case the CIP doesn't pass again.
But he's, he's not going, he's not gonna make that purchase unless he gets his CIP increased. So, then.
No, he can say that.
You can't do that, you gotta vote on it.
No, you can't.
No, I think you misunderstood. If, 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 if he doesn't get money in his CIP account, he's not buying the ambulance. I mean, where is the money gonna come from?
Well, he will if it passes.
But you're putting it on the ballot.
The lease agreement.
Right.
So, you, you put it out, it passes.
That would increase the CIP.
No.
No.
No, if you vote to buy the ambulance.
Then you buy the ambulance.
You buy the ambulance.
Right, yeah.
You find, I mean, you have it.
Whether you have it for the CIP or not.
Right, you buy it. If it passes, it passes.
Right.
And then the plan, it's passed by the plan, that it will read out how it's going to be purchased.
So, we're not tying that to the purchase?
No.
No.
So, regardless, so regardless.
It's not tied to the purchase, really?
No.
It is and it isn't.
It, it's only tied to a CIP with the initial down payment.
Right, right.
The hundred thousand that we have in the CIP.
So, if he doesn't get his CIP.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
If he doesn't get his CIP, then the payment would have to come out of his budget for a year.
Deborah, her response.
So, in the past, the way I've seen it on the ballot, in the way that we've passed several things, such as no spray and stuff like that, is that it goes back on the, well, just the first one that came off the top of my head, is that it's a contract. So, yearly, instead of saying, you know, yearly back and forth, yearly you would see on it, should the vote is raised and appropriate, sixty-three.
Sixty-one thousand, whatever.
As, as called for in our contract. I mean, either that, or you're, if you say no, you say no, but you're breaking your contract, and your town's rating is gonna go down, but at that point.
No, 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 that's.
You don't, yeah, that's how, that's how they.
I, I, I think there's some confusion. And I, I think I'm right, but I'm not a hundred percent, so other people can correct me, but. Normally, when you, the, the hundred thousand is just a drop-down, so just use round numbers, instead of three hundred, we're looking at two hundred. So, how do you finance that? It's gonna come out with three years, it's gonna be one number, four years, it's gonna be another number. And so, the referendum item is gonna be, to finance for three years, four years, a payment of X, and so, the, the voters are gonna be approving three payments or four payments of whatever. And there's no more funding left, they've already approved each year's funding. So, you're not leaving it up to the following year to pass, it's already been passed, and so, it's not gonna. And it's a separate line item, it's a separate referendum, it has nothing to do with fire EMS budget, and it has nothing to do with CIP, with capital improvement. That's a whole separate, capital improvement will be a whole separate number. And so, my concern though is, if you ask for the, if you ask for the ambulance, but now you increase, which you're already asking for more money, and now you increase the CIP, you're, you're, you're making, while, while, I'm, I'm, I'm all for increasing the CIP personally, we're trying to make something pass, and I think if you keep asking for more money, more money, more money, everything's gonna fail. And so, I think you need to leave the CIP fifty, everybody that has passed now for, I think, three years in a row anyways. So, pretty soon, huh?
This will be the fifth year.
Okay, five years, so, people are getting pretty used to doing fifty. You start, you raise that, now you gotta make them, well, I don't know about that. You know, what's, what's wrong with fifty? So, I, I just, while personally I have no issue, I don't have a problem with it, because they need money. But that's, that's, that's the thing, and if you take it all out of CIP for other payments, then again, if they need a fire truck, if they need an extractor, if they need some other equipment, in the next couple of years, there, there'll be zero money.
I think at some point, maybe at the meeting, that we ought to explain to people, using the lowest common denominator, how much it actually costs them. It's per, per household, it's, it's a minimal cost, really.
Debbie, I agree with you, but I've been doing this for a long time. And not enough people come to the meeting to disseminate this information. They hear you, and the people that are there, maybe you can get them on your side, but we've got thousands of other people on the town.
Okay.
And they need to show up.
My, my concern, my concern about asking for money for the ambulance and the CIP without nesting them together, is if they're gonna say, well, you're already getting fifty thousand for the CIP, why do you need more money for the ambulance? If you tie in them together, then they're going, to me, I would say, okay, well, if you're paying it out of the CIP, that's what that fifty thousand dollars is for, is for that ambulance, or seventy-five is for that ambulance, I'm all for that. But if you've got two referendums on there, one to create, increase the CIP, and one for a payment on the ambulance, okay, I'm gonna reject one or the other. And, and the one that's higher is the one I'm gonna reject. So, so that, that's my concern about, about the separation.
Alright, does anyone, does anyone want to go ahead and make a proposal?
I don't know, I mean, that's my issue with paying a hundred thousand.
Okay, okay.
I think if we paid a hundred thousand, that, I mean, we have to somehow say that it's coming out of what we have now.
Yeah, it, it's a good point. It's a very good point.
And I agree with you, if we try to raise, raise it to a hundred thousand plus hit the ambulance, it's not, it's not gonna happen.
So, okay, you've got two minutes down.
Two minutes. Chip, can you go first, though?
I just wanna say, the other benefit of CIPs is stabilization from year to year to year to year on your budget. You know, and, and you start doing this stuff, instead of you got this, and we're always watching the mill rate do this, and this, and this, and this, and this, and this. I mean, this building was on two tachyls, you know, something like this, a big purchase like this, could have been, you know, put out on a, a bank grant here, but, you know, a loan process for ten years.
That's right.